Our August tenth regular meeting to order as seven oh two. Please write it for the communication. I am the United States of America. This year we are going to spend one vision. We do not have acknowledgements. Nor are we changing the number of items. So we'll jump on to the approval of minutes. We can do both together. So I will entertain a motion to approve the June twenty second regular meeting minutes and the July twenty fifth special meeting minutes.
So votes.
Um, does anyone have any discussion for this before we vote? Any changes? Oh, I'm sorry, Dana's on here too.
Yeah.
Okay, so I have them. Dana, if you can hear me, you can just raise your hand so you can go on to the top of my list of participants. That'd be great. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm having internet issues, so I'm I'm trying to get back in with my video off, so I'll try to attempt to get back in in a sec.
Okay. Just when you come back and come in and I'll just raise your hand. Okay, so at this time, all those in favor can vote aye. Aye. And then unanimously. We're not sure about Dana because she's has her typical dip pool days. Dana, if you are available at this point.
Hi.
All right, it's perfect. Okay. So at this time, I would like to open up the public participation. I'll read this just because we do have a lot of viewers, just make sure. The members of the town Board of Education welcome ever to the public to share their thoughts and ideas at this time. When appropriate to do so, members of the board and the administration may respond to comments or points of information. However, in consideration of those in attendance and an effort to proceed in a timely manner, a whole discussion may need to take place outside of the meeting setting. If you could, please remember to list your name and your address for our work. And also please keep it civil. We do have a timer for two minutes, which if I know now it's double here. It doesn't show up on the the meeting. So you're going to have a share.
Yeah, got it.
Perfect. Okay, so at this time, if you would like to speak in the room, it can come up and our owl will pick you up. Wherever you move, it will follow you. Or if you are online, if you could raise your hand, we can look from there. Okay, um, we do have Steve Jones.
Hey, Ashley, Steve Jones, five one four Old Stafford Road, just speaking as a member of the town council. Just letting you all know that I am the liaison for the month of August. So you'll see my icon for the next few meetings. And if there's anything that you would like relayed back to the rest of the council or the town manager's office, I will be here. Thank you.
Thank you so much. At this time, anyone else? If you are online, please just raise your hand and I can call you on the list. Seeing none, well, we will move on to correspondence.
Okay, so this covers all correspondence between the second meeting and the present. We had an email back on your board for voting unanimously to give Dr. Will a raise and more compensation. The author asks why some board members did not support extending the Evergreen contract. We had another email asking why some board members do not support extending the Evergreen contract to the superintendent. An email thanking Dr. Will for his handling of end of year activities such as prom during COVID nineteen. An email regarding financial literacy course offerings. The author asks if any progress has been made on making personal finance graduation requirement. An email from the president of the town soccer club to the Birch Grove Building Committee Chair and the board noting the poor condition of the Birch Grove soccer field. An email regarding a contract to whether proper bidding rules were followed. An email from State Representative Nuccio regarding Department of Health COVID nineteen guidance for the upcoming school year. And an email from the Jewish Community Relations Council listing Jewish holidays for the upcoming school year so the board could plan. And that's everything.
Thank you very much. Now, we do not have our student representatives at this point, but we do have them listed on our agenda. But we've got to make a big deal on that here. So we're just going to kind of move along. And let's move to the first item under the super heads report, which is the mental health task force attendance, which there is no enclosures. And so I will start off with this item. Okay. So in terms of this, this is kind of what I wanted to just get this into the open. So this mental health task force is near and dear to my heart. The task force was established in March of twenty twenty one. Becky Moore, the chair of the mental health task force, had reached out recently to me and explained what was going on. Um, we have a member, Tony, that had only attended nine out of the twenty six meetings that had taken place. He was also on the self committee to review the existing data. The self committee met on eleven seventeen, twelve thirteen, and three seven, which he was not in attendance to any of the subcommittee meetings. She had spoken to Tony on four four and he had continued not to attend meetings. To me, I gotta be honest, I personally lost my own brother who took his life in town, right here in town. And I do feel like this attendance is kind of a slap in the face of those in our community who have mental health issues. I mean, this is a huge ordeal. So, you know, I do think accountability is a big part of being elected official. Um, I had given all board members the opportunity to see if they would so choose to be a representative on the board. Jen Galichin had reached out and said she'd be willing to be the board representative on the task force. And I do have Becky Moore, who is the chair, and I also have Madhu as the vice chair. So I just wanted to put this on here as to why things are changing and what is happening. Did you have anything that you want to add or?
Um, I just, the data is the data. Um, you know, this isn't about Tony's ideas. He has great ideas. It's more about the consistency of attendance. You know, the, I went through, I looked through all the minutes. Jacob is the secretary of, you know, and I counted up and the number you said nine out of the twenty six, twenty seven was what Tony was able to attend. Um, and I, Tony, I think we talked on April fourth. I don't know if you said April fourth that gave you. And we had talked about it and I, you had asked me to like remind you when the meetings were again, and I told you and you said that you were going to come. Um, and then you didn't come again until like June. So at that point, I had already, well, I was reaching out to Ashley anyway and saying like, hey, can you like reconsider what this looks like? And is this really the best option due to the inconsistency in attendance? So, um, you know, just everything Ashley said is spot on. Um, the data is the data. It's not a, it's not an opinion and say, this is how many meetings were attended. This is what we talked, this is what happened after.
Just to add on to that, Tony, I've worked with you on the policy committee. I I've worked with you very well. I like you. I think you're, I think you have great ideas. But those aren't facts, you know? I mean, and it's, it's problematic when we have, sometimes we struggle for quorum. Sometimes, you know, and then it's, it's about, you know, we need members that will do the work, you know? So I mean, again, you know, I like you. You know, we work well together, you know? It's just the data is the data.
And, and I mean, yeah. I know it's not, I don't want it to come across that bad. No ill will go either one of you for bringing this up. I do want to bring up a couple of points. I think you, you know, my, my attendance through there and I'm not going to argue that the number nine or ten is probably close. But you brought up a good point when you said that there were times that they, the task force struggled to make quorum. Uh, if we go over through that same time, we'll find nobody that had perfect attendance. In fact, I would challenge and I looked at Jacob as the factor. I think we're going to find that I'm not the only that had significant attendance issues. So my, my point in all that being is if the metric, or whether or not we should be on this committee is perfect attendance, then we're going to have to redo pretty much the whole thing. My concern though is Madam Chair, how we, the board, that one. If, and looking at the email that that was more sent to you, it was sent sometime around the beginning of June. It was the beginning of July when I received an email from the chair saying, I'm replacing you. So nowhere during that month was there an attempt by anybody on leadership to reach out and get my thoughts, give them their opinions, get my point on the data. I may have had a disagreement. I don't, but I may have had a disagreement with Ms. Moore's dad. We were never given that opportunity. I know it's well within leadership's right to switch. And I think Jen's going to make an excellent person on that committee. I mean, I'm just disappointed in the fact that we no longer communicate. That decisions like this are made in a vacuum and that the only notification we get is the email saying.
I will say just one thing real quick. I can tell you with near one hundred percent certainty, there's not a single person on the task force that has missed nearly as many. Not one. So I mean, I, and I, like, yeah, you know, I get what you're saying. I can't, I, okay, I was just gonna say.
I've looked at the numbers and looked through it. There for the bit, so the expectation is not hundred percent, a perfect tenant. I have missed some because we all have personal lives. These are volunteer positions. It happens. Um, but I have looked through pretty thoroughly and there is not anybody that's missed that many at all. And there's a few people that are absent more often than like they, you know, I'm trying, I'm sorry. I'm trying to think of how to word this the right way. There are a few people that miss maybe more than others. Um, and the thing is though, they communicate with me, they tell me what's going on or they'll, they're trying to get on, but there's technical issues. Not that there's ever an excuse and like, you know, not that this is about good excuse, bad excuse, et cetera, et cetera. I know that you have a lot of work stuff. We had talked about that when we talked on the phone before. Um, but it's the, it's not anywhere near that amount. Um, and I'm more than happy to get the actual numbers if we want. And I would say the max that anybody else has really missed over the past year, how many? Max, seven or eight, maybe.
And we have as the flip of attending nine out of the twenty six. I mean, it started in, you know, two, two thousand and twenty one. So I, you know, I do have a big issue with that. And if you're going to talk about one month of me trying to make sure that everything is organized, getting the communication to actually talk to her, pop out the information with everything else going on with the board of ed. I think that her talking to you as chair of the self committee and not taking that as a personal responsibility of it, making sure that you're in attendance. I do think that it is an issue.
Well, and
And you have to like accept that as yourself, like you can't put that on anybody else.
And make no mistake, I think you're, you're misunderstanding. In no way am I saying that my attendance is your responsibility, Ms. Moore's responsibility issue. Jacob, I'm still. We did speak and I appreciate you reaching out for me. And I went to a couple of meetings after we spoke on it. Subsequently, I didn't miss pretty much all your subcommittee meetings. My apologies. And some more of the, the regular meetings. My point is not that. My point is when you decided to switch, when you read the email and decided those were the facts, in no way did you reach out to me and get my thought in that month. Now, I recognize that you, you know, that there are probably a lot of things to do. Uh, I recognize that that could possibly have been delegated out to somebody else. I know you had time to communicate with Ms. Moore. I know you had time to look at the notes. I know you had time to make decisions. You did not have time to send a text.
Well, I also think as chair, hearing from the chair, that she would like to have a different member due to being an attendance issue. I don't think, like, you should know that you are supposed to attend the mental health task force that you are, you signed up for and that you are a representative of Board of Ed. That to you, like, you should show up. That's the end of the day, like, you should show up.
I apologize, we did reach out first and that there was a, a lapse in communication from our, our bench.
Anybody else on this line? Okay. Thank you for attending. Thank you very much for your thoughts.
Thanks for inviting us in.
Absolutely. Okay, so let's move on to the monthly financial report.
So as you know, at the beginning of every month, we do a monthly financial report. In this particular case, this financial report is a pre audit version of the June twenty, you know, June twenty twenty two final rooms. So what I wanted to try to do is give the board as soon as we possibly could, an idea of where we landed last year. But please keep in mind that by doing this, you know, now we just haven't gone through the audit process. We're not one hundred percent sure that this is exactly where it's going to fall, but it's going to fall largely within this, this space. So, um, you know, this snapshot is, is basically the end of year snapshot. We added balance nine, nine thousand nine hundred dollars or point zero two percent of the current Board of Ed budget or last year's Board of Ed budget. We received six hundred fifty one thousand four hundred twenty two from excess cost. Um, and so, you know, I did talk about coming in around this zone. I thought it would be about thirteen and ended up being, you know, uh, right around nine, nine, nine fifty one. So if you look back over the history of where the board budgets have typically fallen, this fits more in line with where the board budgets have typically fallen. You know, I've said a few times before, we had some outlier years. The two COVID years were roughly outliers. Then you had these two crazy state budget years, uh, just a little before that. So on a, on a seven year cycle, you know, four of those years were greatly outside of the realm of what is a typical year. And so you go back to typical years, you're looking at more of this zone somewhere from the, you know, roughly ten to seventy or eighty, you know, type of thing. And so we're back within that one. So that's the long and short of it. I just wanted to give the board an idea of where we ended at the end of June. Yes, you know, and we'll have more information as we, we get wrapping up everything with the final budget and the audit. We can recommend or ask that this get moved to the ERF fund, but it's, it's nine thousand bucks. So at the end of the third quarter, we can make a determination and then ask them to move it to ERF, but we're not going to have a big, big deposit in ERF this time.
Okay. So quick question for this one. So, um, repair and maintenance services. I know I'm asked about this line a couple of times. We left with, uh, we had a balance of about twenty percent left. The audit, judging this is the same, probably will. My question is, was there like a work stop put in place for that amount? Or was there just not enough work to be done to expend all of that money? Well, because I know we, we went back and forth a little bit about that line during the budget season and subsequently since then, about whether that was inadequately or it was overfunded.
Well, I'm going to conjecture that really what ends up happening usually because of how our, and I'll give you a hard answer when I look back into it, thinking FFC on the thirty first, but, um, it's probably from one of two things. One, our director of facilities is extremely efficient. Some of the projects that he did may have resulted in less cost than would have otherwise been the case because he rolled things he got. And he does that sometimes, which gives us the opportunity to have some, you know, sometimes funds that we can use for other things at the end or, or roll to ERF. So you'll notice that even though it is that, you know, whatever forty, you know, forty thousand at the end, uh, I don't think we ever overfund facilities because there's never anything in facilities that ever one hundred percent gets fully completed. Like, if you walk or, I mean, we fully complete the projects, but if you walk around our grounds, there's stuff to do. So if he finds efficiencies on certain things, it may result in not using that full forty, but we use it somewhere else. You know, as we get to the end of the year, usually on projects that we brought to the board. So he just does such an efficient job of it that sometimes there's some money left over in there, which is probably the case. The other thing is, we didn't really receive any information. And this is not anyone's fault. This has no, no fault whatsoever. It's just how timelines fall. We just recently received communications about what was going to be funded and exactly when from the town on certain faculty things. So some of that money he might have been holding on to because he wasn't sure timeline was, whether he could execute. And so it just rolled over because we just weren't sure. You can't do something that isn't, you know, that isn't going to be able to be completed in a certain timeline. And it may have been that with everything lining up, we knew that certain things just weren't going to be able to be accomplished in a certain timeline. So that, that might have rolled over. But that, the end of your balance being nine thousand means that that forty really isn't forty. It was probably utilized somewhere else, you know?
Yeah, and that's like, and it's, it's kind of a moot point this year, just because, as you mentioned, we came very close to having zero dollars left at the end. So, um, anything helps, but it was just something that I know we discussed a bit, you know, whether based upon the amount of staff we have to do projects and the amount of hours there are in a day, you know, whether that amount may be. I don't know what time it was around, but you know, not if too much relative to, to misstaffing and, and hours in the day that we can possibly do projects with. So I just was curious about it from a future budget standpoint.
Yeah, and I, I'll look into what you said. I think it really has to do more with the efficiencies to be able to accomplish.
Yeah, well, that too, you know, that would
So that ended up having some at the end, but he can't always accomplish. Yeah, it's always one of these tricky things. Yeah, I will tell you right now that as we walk in the district, you'll notice when we do the next capital request and we look at that in FFC in August, maybe first, there's a plethora of things, a lot of things that we would need to have. So what can't happen in capital has to happen with us sometimes at the end of the year. And we just, you know, again, next year, we may have an idea of what is and isn't, and then we can apply it towards that. But whatever he finds in efficiencies usually gets gobbled up somewhere. And so the nine thousand at the end, like an example, this year was gobbled up somewhere. Yeah. Okay, just curious.
Just to tag in, I sent an email to Mr. Griffin. Uh, you know, the conversation that we had with, uh, with facility director in FFC that time he came with, with goal. Learned more about how he, how he tweets things and moves the money around to, to make it work for benefit. Uh, so, you know, tagging into what Dr. Will had saying there, I sent an email to Christine requesting either some additional FFC meetings or to tag existing FFC meeting to focus entirely on facility. Then to add this to the collection, but like this team, at least on paper, kind of his vision, you know, if you recall, he was saying something about how he's got these projects in his head and he's trying to kind of move the cuffs around to get the most bang for the buck, which sometimes means not cleaning out these ducts because he knows it can wait, but instead focusing on the staircase. And I'm making that up. I can like to get a glimpse behind that curtain, so I've asked for that.
And two things that are helpful in that way. The capital budget gives us a five year outlook on kind of big jobs. Then if you look at the annual report, which is something that's posted to the board's dashboard, I put it out annually. Go to the facility section and just as a flyover, that has a lot of what you're talking about. It has a lot of the stuff he's done and a lot of things he's hoping to do. And that's part of our annual report that I, you know, post for the board each year, and I'll be updating again this year. And I think it's on the dashboard there, just, you know, control F, annual report, and then we'll jump down to whenever I posted that.
So previous ones are on there now.
Yeah, the, well, the least, the least, the last one. Usually it's updated every year. I have previous, but the one that's there is probably the most recent.
Okay. And I'll shoot you
And facility section will have some info.
I'd like to see the one right before COVID as well. What a normal one.
That one I might have to draw out because it's two or three years old, but, but yeah, but, but just so anyway, for the over, overview. And then definitely, and then we can talk about services anytime and make that one.
Any other questions in terms of the, as you hear? Um, let's move on to our guest, Mr. Nick Caruso.
Good evening.
So, Nick and I have been talking and one of the things I was going to do just as a basic, basic overview, not going to take a lot of time on it. Some board members have, may not have had the opportunity to look at this. So just setting the stage here, there's a couple of things to draw your attention to as a board. This was posted on the Board of Ed dashboard process wise. The meetings are August tenth, September fourteenth, September twenty eighth. You know, today, and you can read this yourself, and when you go back there, if you haven't seen it, our objectives. Some of the pre meeting activity for today was if you had some thoughts on goals, submitting them. So I do have what people submitted here so that we can start from that point to move forward. The first meeting tonight is really to give you an overview of the portrait of graduate vision and mission, you know, have any gold examples, that type of thing. So just a very quick overview because many of you have seen these before, and this is posted, so you can look at it at your leisure at any time. And then it's really to work with whatever we have pre submitted goals, add to them any goals you feel are important for tonight. Um, and then ultimately at the end of tonight, there'll be a form sent out for you to rank the, you know, rank which ones you feel have the most value, you know, et cetera, or that you feel are most poignant. And that's where we start from on the fourteenth is where you guys had ranked them. So that's a just very quick overview of what we're doing tonight. Also, point your attention to it, this document has the Board of Ed current goals, Portrait of a Graduate, District Traditional Goals, and the Flexibilities. These two are important to keep an eye on because what we used to do for traditional is no longer with the state kind of allowed in some ways. They tweaked kind of what we do. And I, as we talked about this as part of the flexibility stuff that I shared prior, the state's moving in the direction of an evaluation process that resembles more of the sort of flexibilities type goals. So I just wanted you to see that too and see the information about that. Again, at your leisure, you can look at it. And this is posted to the dashboard and so on. So just quickly, Board of Ed goals for last year, you know, showing completion and implementation part of graduate, which is an ongoing thing and we continue to work on it. And this is just a quick thing about Port of Grad, Portrait of Graduate. This inception of that was a previous board and it was designed by board members, community members and teachers, all as part of workshops that were done at the time to come up with the Portrait of Graduate. And that's, you know, what continues to be used today to help enhance our understanding by design or UBD curriculum sheets. So this kind of goes on and on and on for, for a long time. And so completion is probably, that may never fully be completed, but it's always being implemented because there's no technical completion to this. It's used as a guiding document until you decide to replace it with some other guided document. So that's kind of what exists at the moment. Portrait of a Graduate. Um, and then to foster a culture of climate, foster a culture of climate that supports the high levels of learning and engagement towards mental and physical well being and leads to individual student success. Assess our district needs and advocate for resources to meet them while pursuing non conditional sources of revenue, ensuring quality education for all students and nurture and support an inclusive community where all, where every person, regardless of their identity, is acknowledged and respected. And this will ensure the talent students have necessary resources to thrive in school, in the community, and in our diverse. So that's what you have the goals right now. Um, Portrait of a Graduate, I'm not going to read all of this, but this has been around for a long time. I posted it many times. This is the basically mission vision of the district and the Portrait of a Graduate. So everything ties into this, all our UBD documents tied into this. We link the curriculum documents back to this. Um, and essentially these, you know, these core elements of it are what we're looking to achieve through all of our actions and activities. Creative thinking, independent collaborative work, and a bit problem solving, effective communication, empathy and kindness, resilience, persistence, perseverance, integrity. These are traditional goal types. You know, at first, when I was first superintendent, you know, we had district goals on these were what they looked like. And then here are some of the criteria we would use to assess such goals. And these are the kinds of assessing, you know, tools and so on. I put those in support, had a perspective of what, you know, the typical SSP, you know, or SIP goals look like, you know, for posterity. Um, and then I gave you that, I kind of reposted the May eleventh information about flexibilities. Specifically, you know, here's what the state has come up with with respect to that. And then I gave some examples of what some example goals look like under the flexibilities plan. So they had to be under these four overriding categories. For flexibilities, you had to make it something that supported the health, safety and social emotional well being students. Ensure the equity of most vulnerable students and their families. Did mastery based learning to assess achievement, mastery of content, and develop systemic approaches to incorporate social emotional practices and or culturally responsive practices. Sorry. It's very hard to know. Okay. I could use the scroll by, I'd be grateful. Practices into the teaching and learning process, okay? Now, the thing is, the state, state dictates what the overriding ones are. And then we choose what the state calls as EGADs for, you know, indicators of academic achievement and growth, or what we called in our plan, indicators of success. Essentially there, what are you, you know, here's the overriding one. What's the specific thing you're measuring? You know, is it quantitative? Is it qualitative? You know, and at the end of the day, did you achieve it? It's, uh, so these are what admin are evaluated on when I do their end of year evaluations. You know, that is forty five percent of their evaluation is did they achieve the goals that they set out? And so these are examples under the flexibilities plan of what these kinds of goals look like and looked like. So I included those as well. And if people want more details, individual board members happy to talk about, you know, what the You know, what the exact goals were for some of the admin this year. They did great, they achieved their goals largely, achieved their goals, so we had a very good full year. But the flexibilities did dictate a little bit different of a process. So in a preamble, that's basically it. And so for today, I'm just turning it over to Nick. The goal is to come up with a series of brainstorm goals. There's no judgment of the goal. We shouldn't be evaluating each other's goals. It's really just a brainstorming of the goals. To get, you know, into the next stage, which would be ranked, so just throw out every. Did I do an okay job, Nick?
I think so.
My head's been. Nick, you can go. I may be twiddling at this, you know.
Okay.
Twiddling at this thing.
So, as I've been. Listening and I've seen copies of all these earlier, so. It's interesting that goals are sort of a hierarchy that, you know, in your case, I would say the Portrait of a Graduate is sort of the overarching thirty thousand foot level. Which should drive all the other goals as they work their way down. So you're. You're. The district goals would fall under that, then the traditional goals, and then the flexibility, so that. Not only are you. Aiming a little higher with the larger ones, but you're, they're less. Distinct, they're less, they're more amorphous. They, they are vague by design. To give flexibility to do things that meet those goals without having to direct or come back to the board every time you need to change direction a little bit. But by working your way down. And now, I did understand it correctly, the board has adopted the Portrait of the Graduate, is that correct? The documents, the document is completed.
Yes.
Not the plan necessarily, but the document is completed. And you're in the process of implementing that throughout the curriculum, practice, vetting, and instruction. And so. What I would hope is that as you. Look at goals, that there's some alignment of some sort between the expectations of Portrait of a Graduate. Of the whatever board goals that you have with the idea you're going to be. For lack of a better term, interpreting or filtering that. To focus attention on specific areas, which are then, through the more traditional, to the administration. Developing action plans or more targeted goals that will deal with specifics, and then finally, how that all fits into the state. So. I guess what I would start with is if you look at the Board of Education goals, because that's really what we're looking to either. Adjust or replace. I guess I would ask if you would just sort of respond to those and how you feel about the current goals and. Where we might want to think about either enhancing or changing one. Yes.
Yes. So. These goals, I say, I don't regret a whole lot of votes, but I do regret voting for these. And the reason why is I really do not like how vague these are. I know, to your point, you talked a little bit about that. If I was a little bit more experienced as a board member at the time, I would have voted against it because. By their own vagueness, I think they're really easy to ignore. And because I don't think we spend a whole lot of time looking back at these and kind of incorporating them into a. Long-term course of action for the board term. So. I know, Jerry, you'll probably mention to, mention it tonight about SMART goals and having something that's specific and measurable and timely and all that. And it would be my suggestion as a board that we try to pursue something that's a little bit more specific and. Once implemented, I would love if we could. Revisit them from time to time to make sure that we are. Keeping up with them. So that would be my thought in general about these.
And you remember when we created these, it was the beginning of COVID, because this was a meeting on Dooley. With you, and this was at the beginning of everything, so we didn't even know what was going to happen, so that's why there was the vagueness or. Reasons of whether or not to just keep our, using the, keep our school open and safe versus trying to push a little bit more.
One of the things, like the process that you're going into, I'll scope for some of the rest of it. Once the post-meeting activity is ready, and the second meeting is discussing narrowing down your goals. The, the third part here, the board, some of you may not have had a chance to look at it, but the third meeting is all about. Evaluating each goal for what, you know, what would be an appropriate kind of way of assessing, you know, your success. So this chart here, you know, what are the clear expectations? What are the conditions for success that need to be in place for each of these goals? What is the systemic accountability for each of these goals? Like, what are we going to use for criteria? And then, you know, building public support, how do we make sure the public is in support? So that's, that's part of this process, and then we would revisit it as a board in February and June. The February period and then June through August. So it does kind of what you're asking in this house, I think.
And I also recommend to boards that it doesn't hurt to have on every agenda, report on goals, and not a full-blown. Report necessarily, but it just might be aligning, for instance, with your agenda. Do you align goals to your agenda topic, so that every time? And I know some boards, I know some board chairs will say if it's not related to a goal, it's not on the agenda unless you make a really good case for it. And so how you. Revisit the goals periodically. It could just be, you know, part of the superintendent report, two minutes. Item three on the agenda is related to goal one. At our next board meeting, we're going to report out on such and such, which is directly related to goal two, so. But the fact that you revisit it every meeting, and then in depth quarterly or every six months. Allows you to let everyone else know that you're watching the goals, because that's, to me, just as important. People have to, I've seen boards write some incredibly beautiful goals, and then you go back a year or two later, and. They can't even remember that it's at the front of the policy manual, and then they. And again, I believe they are driving the administration's work in most of these cases, but it's not the board's work, and that really should be what you focus on as well.
Yeah.
So I think as part of our third session, we might want to talk, and as part of where we're defining the board's role in all this. What the board is willing to do to support those goals and what you need to change on your end to make those happen. You have, just like you're going to look to Dr. Willard and say, goal three. How are we doing? Why are we doing it the way we're doing it? Tell us more about it. We're holding you accountable, as we should. You should hold yourselves accountable too. We're a board of education, and this is our most important work. What are we doing to support it as well?
Yeah.
If that makes sense.
And I like that idea. I think that would be something that I'd be open to. Again, a couple of steps I haven't done, but.
But, you know, it helps as you're thinking about what we're doing tonight to have a better understanding of what it could be.
Yeah.
So. We did get a few. Notes early, and I think, Dr. Willard, you're going to track what's on there. There are several that relate to staying focused on student achievement or on students, and I think that was sort of a universal thing. I suspect that there. That will be integrated into any goals that come out. Certainly, if I'm helping facilitate it, I. Try to make sure of that. Facilitators aren't supposed to impose their own thoughts into these processes, but that's one that I try to, because. I think focus on the students is the most important. Positive learning environment, responsible budget, transparent budget process. Obviously, if you don't have the resources, you can't do the work, and. I think that was important. A couple of people said things like that were important. Cost-effective manner. There was comments on SEL. And, well, you can look at them yourselves, but. And then remain, the one that I thought was interesting was the one on special education, because you have a current goal on. SRPI, I think that was in the second level of goals. The more traditional goal, if I remember correctly. But that is, and that would sort of align with that. As well as sort of your existing goal for. Goal for, so. I guess I would start by asking people. And again, if you want to clarify what you mean by something, if someone wants to say, well, I'm trying to understand that, let's, let's follow that up, but. The idea is to throw a bunch on the wall and see what sticks, and then through your viewing process over the next couple of weeks. You know, you'll review them, you'll rank them, and then when we come back, it's going to give us a roadmap of which the group has felt were the most important goals. Because we can't do ten things, you know, not well, or even, I like around three or four personally. To make that worth doing. But we'll have time for that in our next session, where we try to flesh out whatever your ideas are. So with that, I guess I would start by saying. As you look at the existing list that's already out there, are there, well, that's not fair. Why don't we just say that that's the first number of things that have to be ranked? And you will decide as a board what they should. Remain as part of the conversation, and it doesn't mean that all of these will become goals. It means you're going to have a discussion on them. And start to figure out which ones are most important. But I know only three people got a chance to do that, and I'm sure you all have some great ideas, so now's our chance to sort of address those, so.
So I guess my first question would be. I like our goals, the ones that we have now, but I also like these ideas as well. Is it possible to take our existing goals and kind of tweak them or modernize them? What this board is thinking?
Absolutely.
Okay, so we're not just putting those aside and coming up with new ones, but if we could possibly keep those previous.
It's your, it's anything that this board wants to do, and if you, because goals, the goals you have currently. Are not done. You know, at least cursory example, you know, there's some things you've moved along, there's some things you have progress on, but they were never completed. So it may, and it might be that, you know, the concern about they're a little too amorphous, well, maybe in the rewriting, it become a little less so. Or at least we understand within the process that there's a place to be more. Targeted, and it might not be in this goal, but it's in the sub-goals that are generated by this, but that can be part of the conversation, but absolutely, absolutely. That's why I think it's important, probably, well, to include the current goals as part of. The list that people are going to rank.
I'll have them in there right now, Matt.
And you're not limited to four and five, as you're, you know, as we're doing this, let's make the list out. We'll ask you to pick, to rank scale them, which means, you know, the ones with the highest rankings will be the ones to. To be chosen, or to be worked up.
I mean, when I look at this, it's like a lot of them are saying the same thing, just in different ways. So I do like your idea of like tweaking and revamping what we have, but.
So, but let's get the other ideas down, and then we can, from there, next time, we would figure out what goal, if you want to tweak a goal, where would it fit? And how would we do that? It might be that you keep the goal and then you just add some bullet points, or some boards do that. So.
Well, board members that did not have anything to say on the list, go ahead, Callie.
I was just going to say that being, this is my first term. This was a very impressive to me, so I started where most people start, at Google. And I just kind of looked up Board of Education goals and just looked at. As many as I could that popped up, and I think I saw a lot that were general. I did see some more specific, as Jacob had pointed out. You know, it's basically falling into buckets. You know, there was a bucket about academics, a bucket about physical, you know, and whatnot. So a lot of what I did here, you know, I looked at a lot I liked, I copied them all down, and then I looked to kind of make a couple for me. I would love something that's a little bit more specific about social emotional health, especially, you know, where we are post-pandemic, for both students and staff. So that's why I put that in there. Not at all committed to the wording I use, just wanted to get something down to start the brainstorming process. And then the special education, that was mine too. I just happened to see a couple on there, not many. And I just thought it was interesting, and since we didn't have anything that called that out, I thought I'd throw, again, throw it at the wall. I know it's something that we talk about so often, and, you know, is embedded in there as our most vulnerable population, so. Again, I just thought, put it out there, see what we think, see if it's important. And then, you know, just making sure that there was something in there about, you know, how we do work together as a board and. Cooperate and trust and work with our staff and our students and everything. I just thought, what? The right kind of message, you know, going forward. For us, so that's why, that's why I took those three up. There was obviously a lot of other things that were interesting, but because we already had things that pointed to academics and physical responsibilities. I didn't throw those up there.
So when Johnny got my notes, I apologize, I wasn't able to get them in there in time, but. A few of the ones that I thought that were kind of big are. Curriculum-related so much as they are kind of the. The day-to-day managing of the school district and how we've improved that, particularly with. You know, some of our facilities issues that we've been dealing with, some of our transportation issues. I'm wondering if maybe we can create some sort of goal around improving. Some of our transportation troubles. And also working to create resolutions with some of our capital projects that we've been dealing with. I know it's not. The most exciting one, but I think that it's very important, and it eventually will come back to affect students like everyone does. More curriculum related though, I really. Out of all them that we currently have, I like the two expanding, that's a word invented as. While pursuing non-traditional sources of revenue. Goal that we had, and the idea of continuing to expand the pathways programs that Dr. Willard has been working on. I think that's something that we should continue to expand upon for our district. And then the last one is something that Madhu was very passionate about when he was on the board, and I agree with him, it's, I'd like to. Expand our personal financial literacy offerings that we have, and see how we can incorporate that more up into the curriculum for all students. I think that's something that students have been, especially recent graduates have been saying, has been lacking in a lot of school districts around the country. I think we have a good program here, but I think that if we can expand it to more students, that would be excellent.
Mrs. Brish loves that you just said that.
I figured you'd like that one.
Yeah. Same page. I'll go, yeah, I just. So these goals I've actually had since a month and a half after the election, so I didn't know when these sort of got started. And so I just started adjusted them as the terms going on. I didn't submit any because I thought they were sort of lacking much. And you all are much, clearly much more mature than I am, because. I now see why my questions are more valid than I would have originally predicted, because I've now seen. Anywho. It's frustrating that some board members are not taking the goal setting seriously, that, you know, leave it at that. My first goal was to, in whatever way possible, provide relief to the superintendent's office, whatever that looks like. Whether that means giving him less jobs leaving this boardroom, whether that means giving his, his office less jobs leaving this boardroom. Whether that means hiring, however, that, whatever happened, we need to take to do that. I feel like that's important. That's number one. Two, investigating long-term solutions for keeping staff in town. I feel like this is important. Staff turnover is becoming more and more of an issue, not just in town, but in the country. As a whole, and so I think if we can get ahead, well, really, we got to catch up, but if we can get to that point, we're only putting ourselves at an advantage. Three, along Jen's point. Putting a much larger, larger focus on the mental health and substance abuse task forces. Job, you know, and what it, what it handles on a daily basis, on a bi-weekly basis. It's an important task force, and I feel like, you know, that work, we should, we should be talking about it, I feel like more in this room. So if we can do, you know, start, start something once a month, even just talk about, you know, that task force specifically because of the impact it could have on this community. I feel like that could get us pretty far. And then four. Again, similar to Jen, fostering a cohesive, this is actually, I sort of stole the beginning of this from our current rules. Fostering a cohesive and collaborative relationship with town departments and the town council. Now, that's not as urgent. I don't think there's any. Issues with any departments or any town council, as far as I know, so that one's, you know, down there for a reason, but I still think it's important. Yeah.
And as I write these, if you think that there is anything I have not written correctly, just tell me. You know, put them up for.
Is this still open?
Oh, yeah, it is. That's open. It's just, don't worry, but I'm copying anything that wasn't submitted. The whole purpose of it was to, to take anything that you mentioned in this meeting. And put it up there, and then I'll be sending it back out to all of you. So if there's anything here that I'm not recording, you know, accurately. To what the nature is or the spirit of what you're saying, tell me in a light. So I'm writing down what you all are saying as I, as I hear it.
If, if it's helpful, would it be? Possible to ask board members to review, especially the areas they submitted before, like Friday or next, I mean, you set the deadline. Let you know by that time before you start putting that. Scoring sheet together, and that way, there can be some clarity.
Yeah, I'll put this out there. Yeah, I, I'll, I'll put this out there, I'll post it, we'll add that layer of look at what we have, you know, if you wanna make a tweak, tell me what your tweak is. You know, what I could also do is um add comment on this, so you can just make your own comments and change it relative to your comment. You know what I mean?
But that's not what we're doing, not comment like we're doing at the next.
Yeah, not criticism, I'm using the term comment, you know. Essentially what you would do is you would not comment on anyone else's. You would just say, uh, you know, for instance, uh, for Jade and you said to foster cohesion collaboration, town has departments and town council. Let's just say, I'm just spitballing you, like you, you were talking about DPW. You would just put in a note that said, I, you know, I please put in, you know, in addition to BPW, you know, and I would just add that to it. You know, um, so I'll make a layer of this where I pushed it back out to you and you can, you know, add your edits or whatever. Or you know what I could do, maybe, maybe more effectively? I will copy, I will take this apart by contributor and send it back to. And then you can just send me back an email with any of your, your. I will publish that, because that way people may not want everyone else to see everyone else's. So what I'll do is I'll break this into what you submitted and then send it back to you. Yeah, and so I think we should set a deadline, if you want to contribute any through the form. You know, during this time, then either please make your edits or contribute to the form by and let's set it. You know what I mean? So I'll send these back to you, you can make your edits, but then whatever new ones you have, contribute to the forum, assuming that whatever new ones you have will not need edits. Because you're submitting yours. You know what I'm saying?
I do see that Jen, I see that your hand is up, but Dana's hand is up as well and she hasn't had an opportunity. They just so happen to be on their computers.
No, please go ahead, go ahead, I'm, if Jen wanted to say something, I'll wait, it's fine, I'll let her finish up what she was doing.
I'm just still trying to understand the process, like, can we also, can we help collaborate or build off each other? So for instance, I really like what Jacob said about facilities and whatnot, but he doesn't have all the words together yet. Um, transportation, I mean, I completely agree that we have transportation issues. I don't know what of that is our purview, if that's because.
Yeah, well, it'll happen between them, next time is, you will, in your next conversation, merge. You know, when you see where everything fell, you might say, well, let's merge these and let's put this together over that. Um, what we have to be careful about here is we can't have a meeting outside of public. You can provide a clarification for me to put back, but like we can't go back and forth. The, the thing about that direct commenting on one, one thing might be that we're actually making decisions outside of the session. So what I can do is throw at you and then take back from you clarifications you had and then put it out to the board. But when we synthesize, we're gonna be doing that here. So even though this process is just writing all the ones down that come out and as people are saying them, we may merge some next time. You know, we, as we're consolidating these, they may have a rank that, you know, that one may be ranked pretty low, but we wanna see it consolidated with something above that. Then you would just have that conversation in that next meeting.
It might be, for example, there's four different ones about transportation. None of them have a majority of votes, but collectively it might indicate that there may be a need for that, that goal. So some of that's gonna be on me to try to help you pull all that together. I also think we're gonna have to make sure we have plenty of time to do this. I don't think we can do it in like the half hour to an hour that we planned for tonight. Um, because we'll want to.
Do we have one, I, because Jacob mentioned facilities and transportation, which might need to be handled separately. Do we have facilities up there? I just thought like, for, to, to his point about facilities and you having a safe. On a comfortable environment for our, for our staff and our students is important and is part of, you know, the learning process and our responsibility as a board, so.
And part of what the next stage is, is really simple. It's taking everything we, you know, that you threw out there and merging.
You know, and just as an example too, you have your second one is foster a culture and climate that supports levels of learning, et cetera. That, a component of that could very well be the facilities, the way you're speaking of them. So I, as I say, once we start to break, you know, collect the ideas that we don't wanna lose, we can start to figure out where the best place to put them in.
And to me, when I'm reading a couple of these, like what you had, and I, like, it's almost like we sent similar things just in different ways. So I definitely can see how that would be, you know, to put that together. And whether we revamp what we have here to see some of these other areas. I mean, I do think we have at least a structure. To build off of, you know, I don't think, it may be vague, but we can, you know, build off of it.
Oh, no, what about Dana?
Oh, Dana.
Hi, can you guys hear me? Okay, excellent, so, um. First of all, I, my apologies for not submitting to the form. Uh, Ashley and Sophia had reached out to remind me and no excuse, I should have taken it, you know, and made it a priority, so my apologies. Um, I am in the heating and cooling business in the middle of a heat wave, so I'm sorry. Um, what I will say is I, I was looking at, I did something similar to what Jen did. Um, same thing that we did last time is I, I did look up different school, just, I looked at the Connecticut State Board of Education, their goals. I looked at other goals of districts around us and throughout. Um, but I definitely, you know, wanna make sure that we keep Portrait of a Graduate on there from our, from our previous, whether we reword it to make it. Fit our current Board of Ed, uh, I think that's really important. Um, I want to somehow incorporate focus on the whole child, uh, determining their needs, whether it be academic and or SEL. Um, we could talk about strengthening the interventions for all students, behavioral, academic, providing educational support. Again, uh, I'm getting a little long word printed and this is where you need to reel us in there, sir. And make sure we stay focused um on that, but those are some things that I had kind of jotted down.
Dana, I apologize, can you, can you just repeat those real quick?
So again, it's long worded, so you're gonna have to streamline me. So first I want us to, to revisit Portrait of a Graduate and, and have it. Um, written down like from our Board of Ed versus the previous Board of Ed, but I think it's important as one of our primary focuses to have that as our number one. Um, I wrote focus on a whole child determining their needs, academic or in or SEL. Um, talking about strengthening interventions for all students, behavioral and academic, um, supporting our staff. Um, and giving them the resources to do those, those things. Um, not, I'm not very eloquent with it, Dr. Willett, the way I'm talking, it's more bullet points that I have. Um, let's see, I'm sorry, I'm just referring to my notes here. Uh, I did like our nurture and support inclusive commi- community as well, especially in the light of what's kind of going on in our nation. Um, and mental health, I know that, um, we had some of the mental health task force team members there tonight. I think it's very important that we talk about how we can support mental health within our town public school community. Um, I did like what Jacob and Jen were talking about, somehow we need to talk about having a realistic tangible budget that supports our school system and our educators. While, um. Being laser focused on. Facilities and plus, I, I mean, I don't know if we get that specific, but definitely talking about those specific things, you know, facilities in the schools. Bus transportation, those kind of things. Um, I will go ahead and repopulate and kind of collect my, my notes, but again, I need someone to probably wordsmith me because. Um, Jen reminds me that I'm long-winded sometimes, I need to get to the point. Um, I did put in enhance and maintain, so this has come something that I wrote and maybe Jacob, you can add on to this and Jen. Enhance and maintain district facilities, support innovative teaching and learning. In a safe environment to pro- and promote, somehow we can add in, promote community participation. I think that kind of incorporates a lot of different things, mental health, staff, students and community. I don't know, I'm trying to get creative, I'm trying to be more positive than some of my peers put. Um, regarding our chair on this form, so I'm hoping that we can move forward from that and work positively. Uh, and um, I think that's all that I have, do you want me to repeat that last one, Dr. Willett?
Please.
Sorry.
No, don't worry.
Hang on, my phone timed me out and I have my notes on my phone here, on my little notepad. Uh, I wrote, enhance and maintain district facilities to support innovative teaching and learning. Um, and promote a safe, uh, in a safe environment. And maybe add in there how to promote community near participation or educator participation.
A safe environment.
In a safe environment. And again, I just wanted to, to, to mention, uh, my displeasure and I was taken aback by some of the. The, the ones that my peers had put on this form, again, I reiterate what Jacob said, I, I hope people take this seriously in our roles and. Um, I don't wanna put in our Board of Education Goals that we need to eliminate the drama from ourselves as, as members. Um, but we all really need to and get back to work and what our work is, is to take care of our students and staff and our, and town public schools. So that's not a goal that I wanna put on there, I don't know how we can put that without being dramatic, but we really need to get back to work. That's it, thank you.
What I might suggest for that is in our third session, when we talk more about the board's role in making all this happen, it might be that this board decides to be more focused on self-evaluation. With the idea of working better together and that could be something we could work through later. But you know, you're gonna have to make some commitments, do some things, just like the administration's gonna have to make commitments to do certain things, make all this happen. Something to think about down the road.
Thank you, I appreciate that and I appreciate you putting it so eloquently, Dr. Willett, on my last bullet, thank you.
No, no problem, and what, what will happen, just to kind of recap, post activity based on the conversation we're having, Nick jump in if you feel like anything should be different. It seems like board members are asking what we're gonna do here is, um, you submit your suggestions, you know, you did that. You, you will each receive a document that has your stuff on it that you've submitted. You can make any tweaks you want and please do that by August 25th. Then they will be taken and put in the ranking doc and then you will all go through as a board and rank the ones you feel are, you know, most poignant or most, you know, most significant. And then at the next meeting, you will then see everything ranked and you can decide what to merge, what to, to get rid of, what to compile, that type of thing. So three big steps here, you're gonna get your own back, make your tweaks by the 25th. Then by August 2nd, um, by the 26th, I'm gonna be putting it in the rankings forum, please have your rankings by September 2nd. Does that make sense? And I put it up there.
Oh, I always throw out one more thing, um, so as we're talking about this, combining the ideas. Can we rate more than like, so say we have one idea, say it's transportation and say there's like three bullet points, both transportation, can we rank them all? That same thing to combine them, or is it just one idea that's it, like one, two, three, four, five, three, four?
Well, you're, you will get a chance as a board, so for instance, use Ms. Philbin's, uh, Jesus Philbin as an example. I will set up a doc that is specifically for Ms. Philbin to review what she has submitted and she makes any tweaks she wants and then that goes into the ranking. And if, you know, uh, if their transportation is a big piece of it, then you can give as many things vibes as you want. You know, and I push that to the top, is that the total aggregate for that one will be five, 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 it'll be the highest, you know? Um, but, um.
I just was trying to, I guess, combining ideas with different people.
Actually, that's what I was gonna suggest as a thought at least, is as you're copying and pasting them into the form. If there's five that are related to facilities or transportation, you might keep them separate, but put them in one group.
Yeah, I can, I can do that, I'll group the, anything that seems like an obvious grouping, I'll group in a space. But I don't wanna.
I think you understood what I was saying. Thank you.
Because otherwise you might distill some of the importance by having, you know, I agree with this, but I don't agree with that one or whatever, this is a five, this is a one. But collectively, you may all agree transportation is an important issue, so let's make sure. And, and that's part of our conversation after is how do they align and what of, what have you captured that people wanna retain and may be willing to let go of?
Yeah, I mean, anything redundant, I'll try to combine.
Perfect. Anybody else?
People in transportation, I want to put the cones on.
So I guess I look at it, this might be different, Nick, the way you pointed in that, I like the vagueness of our, our existing goals. Um, one of the things Nick mentioned. Sorry, uh, one of the things Nick mentioned early in this was the hierarchy. And, and the fact that, you know, our goals should then help the district or help Dr. Willett set their goal, which then help, which then help, which then help. My worry if we get too specific, let's say we've, and I'm just picking this out of nowhere, let's say we say we wanna deal with the bus situation, put that as a goal. Is that then ties the hand of the guy or the, the girl, the teacher that, that's responsible for creating the, how they do that. Where I think we missed, not necessarily failed, but we, we, we need to take that next step is what Dr. Willett was showing earlier, the, the, how do we do it? You know, if we took our existing goals and we had continued on with this process and put in the, what are the, what, what? Well, yeah, what are the, what are the things that we'd see if we were succeeding in this goal? Um, you know, we've got that one on there that talks about creating the environment, you know, the safe environment for, for the learning. You can see facility falling under that, you can see, uh, transportation falling under that. Uh, the, the bottom goal, which talks about creating, you know, an inclusive environment for, you know, people, all students of all races and all levels. Uh, our special education conversations involve in that, some of the other, uh, the, the pathway conversations involve in that. Uh, I think our goal should be, huh? But we should then clarify it and kind of narrow it down and provide that guidance that you would then flow down to those lower level. Uh, the one thing, you gotta forgive me, I've been focused again the past couple of weeks on that, that Pete conversation. Uh, the one thing that I had is somehow creating processes from success. Uh, that we've got, for example, with, with Pete, you know, mixing things around and figuring out how to do the max with the minimum stuff. How do we create policies, how do we create, uh, communication paths such that those things can happen and we're not personally, the next guy can do those things, the next board can do those things. Yeah.
So just to, just part of what you said, Tony, um, the chart that Walt mentioned earlier, that's gonna get to some of those specifics. So that could be a chance to break it down and, you know, what will, what will the superintendent recommend we use as a metric? Or that's specific, when we start to drill down a little bit, so.
And actually be part of, or it should be part of our conversation. Regardless of what the goals are, you know, I think, but back here, you know, we've still got a copy of, of previous boards, three or four boards of goals, goals. And, and looking at that and saying, okay, how far are we off, you know, how far did, did we change our goals based on that? Um, and you know, what you said earlier, oh, sorry, Dr. Willett, you said earlier about periodically going back in that we're gonna have this time of review, we're gonna have this time of review. Uh, I think it's critical that we as a board take a look and we adjust back or back based on our goal. You know, Ashley made a comment earlier about we made these goals and then the world fell apart, so we really didn't get a chance to, to focus and make sure that we were doing right. But you know, fingers crossed, coming out of it, uh, here's our chance to, to do it right and to make sure that what we put in place here, our asses.
You brought up a good point because I believe that was, um, goals between the town council and Board of Ed, more on what you were talking about.
Yeah, you're referring to a working agreement, but one of the things I did for the past and the work was to show, you knew old board goals, which I can do. I didn't do that this time, as we've done that in the past, I didn't wanna take up a lot of time on those that are not necessarily this board's genesis, you know, so. Um, so that's kind of where we're at, but I can post any of that.
But you know, to Jen's point that we found that perhaps once we have our, our board goals. Perhaps that makes a second step to creating something new with the town.
That was down the facility, but, but we had a, we had a shared meeting. Um, that was generated through a, a shared meeting of the board and council, or at least maybe three, I think, that ended up synthesizing the work.
But it's something that, you know, is brought up and like I said, I mean, we perhaps would put that aside as the next step that we, once we have our goals before. And talk to them.
When it falls in line, you know, we, we've got something else there about creating the, creating a transparent budget that fills in the needs. A positive and productive relationship with the council helps. You know, that, that, I remember this gender data, so one of you was talking, uh, about, you know, soothing some of the, the ill will. Not just in here, but just in general, helps those as well, you know, there's.
And then your goal may be to have a strong working relationship with the council, one of your, and when you go to that chart that we are gonna do at that part of the process. Um, you know, there, this may, this, a working agreement like this might be one of the ways that you know you achieve success. Right, that would be one of the steps.
And it means your, your smart desires, things that can be checked, so that we can periodically say, hey, we're not.
Specific, measurable, technical, research-based.
There you go.
There we go.
We had smart for a minute here.
But I do like that, you know, I think that's, you know, an idea, a goal, you know, that's what this conversation is for. And, you know, bringing that up, when all the little pieces, I always do the puzzle.
I mean, I'm just flashing on a crazy idea. You couldn't do that with a lot of different town councils, for example, but you could pass your goals and say, we'd like to send them to the town council. And have them adopt them for the board, you know, or just to endorse them or vote to support them. I'm not sure what the language would be, and that is. Dangerous ground there because they might start to try to rewrite them, and that feeds the whole perfect place, something to think about.
It's not the hours that we spend with you.
Just to add on to all that, I think that opens up our goals, possibilities, if we do do two different sets of goals. One simply for us nine or us eleven, really, every week to go over and make sure we're we're following. Um, and then one shared between us and the town council there. Again, that just opens up more focus areas for us. Not that we don't have, if it doesn't become a goal, it's not like we're gonna ignore it, but it just puts more emphasis on other issues that are important. But that, you know, while we're prioritizing really, you know, three or four other, you know, on the main, so I just think it opens up. You know, what is it? How many goals are on there? Four?
Remember those, these are, these are not necessarily.
So like seven or eight. So, I mean, I mean, on that list, I don't know how many there are, but there's fifteen to twenty on our Google sheet right now. Um, and so if there are truly fifteen and twenty goals here, that that can be their own. Um, you know, I think that's where we start with. Keep in mind fifteen to twenty goals, you're never gonna finish any. No, and but that's not what I'm, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is just picking and choosing from what's there. What doesn't become board goals. Now we've got that much stuff to talk about with the town council. And so, you know, it's it's tough to consider outside of just, again, just us nine and.
And some of the things that you're listing here may not make it into your goal statement, but the superintendent's gonna take them and incorporate some of those things into his plans. Cause he might still have, this isn't specific to the goal, but it's actually something that would support the goal. So your ideas don't, just because you don't add them to the list of goals doesn't mean they get lost.
Oh, absolutely. No, absolutely. And so are there, there's the administrative draft, um, their goals is not already. Uh, would, could, would, you know, I don't even, is there, is there a draft of?
Yeah, I mean, most of our goals are trenchable, you know, like we're on the theme, right? So we're making goals about where reading levels, different things are, and and you're, you're standing at the top of the hill. Kind of saying, you know, we want to move in the direction, for instance, this board may want a high, a greater emphasis on social emotional support and learning. Than maybe two boards ago, because that wasn't even terminology at the time, you know, mental health in town, that has been a very big drive. You may want a major focus on, uh, mental health and welfare of staff and students, you know, and that type of thing. And then what that does for me is that kind of goal, that's, that's the top of the hill goal. I take that and go, oh, well, the board wants, you know. What if, you know, for mental health for staff, should I be seeking new relationships to reach it with, you know, new, new sources? To bring in mental health sources so that people have immediate local mental health sources for staff, you know, and that type of thing. So you add that one word to something as a board, it changes, uh, you know, it puts emphasis on a certain approach that I would take. And now I would also be looking for clinics to bring here that would be part of our brick and mortar that would be at low cost to the district. High value for keeping our workforce in place and supporting the mental health and stability of staff. So that's an example.
About this because you already seem to have a plan.
Well, that's, that's where you're going. But I, you know, I want you to generate and Dick, you know, kind of come up with these, of course, these are the things. And some of these you may be merged. So you're coming up with just a lot of things right now. The purpose of the next stage is the rank, but then you merge. Because when you're talking about things like transportation facilities, you're really talking about operations. So, you know, you may be looking for creation of standards for operations that the board has the following standards for operations. And, you know, these, you know, you want high standards for operations, and then when you talk about what the criteria is for which you do. You know, determine success on that, it may be a certain level of service in each of these standards, you know, each of these areas of operation. Right? So a lot of this will get merged. So don't worry about something being too small or too large. Cause as you go through the next stage in the process, you're synthesizing and merging, even if something gets a little rank. May from the nature of its category, wrap it into something, your language, because your language will be a little more tilt off. And our language is trench, you know, where we're looking at the exact population. So when you say mental health, I'm going and taking that to, you know, the populations of our staff, what they're struggling with specifically. And what services we can bring into place to make sure they're served, so that they can continue to serve the children well, just using that. And for kids, beyond what a parent can get from a local, you know, from their own pursuit of mental health resources. What beyond that as a board, do you want me to be working on offer? Because, you know, you, we could start our own sort of clinical offerings here that are, you know, but I'm using that as an example. When you say mental health, what do you want, you know, you know, mental health of students? Okay, because we have psychologists, we have social workers, we have counselors. What on top of that are we really, are we looking for? Are we talking about a new level of that, a new way of achieving that, you know? Um, so you'd be setting the sort of goal in the broad sense, and we talk about what criteria you think is, you know. There's something that would indicate success about that. Somebody might say, local clinic, and off I go, you know? So you, that's where your head is, you know, setting up that overarching goal and what criteria do we consider success.
First of all, I love this conversation, um, gets the wheels turning. But I just, um, wanted to make sure that we focused on, like, our goals aren't necessarily our physical actions of the goals. It's our goal that we can focus on, like the item of prize, I guess, if you will. So I just want to make sure that, I mean, I know today we're kind of spitballing things like Jen was saying, let's see what sticks. Um, but I definitely think that we need to, um, focus on, I mean, because we have such a big list. Focus on maybe not necessarily specific steps of those actions to get to those goals, just what our goals are. I just wanted to make sure I just said that. Um, I really do, uh, like, I'm appreciating this conversation. And I like the several of them that we talked about, the community and fostering positive relationships with the council. I think that was really good, so. Just, we need to keep it going. And just remember that it's not, it's not, it's our goals, it's our, no. To get there, that's all. Thank you.
I was just asking, in your example, there's well about mental health, we would put a CL under that umbrella too, right? Or would that need to be broken out?
So that could be something that could be combined, because social emotional learning and support does fall under mental health. Although, when you talk about SEL, SEL is actually a, a specific programmatic thing, like Yale ruler SEL program is a specific thing. That we might implement in service of providing mental health pursuits. You know, so a criteria that you might use for the broad goal of mental health, you know, let's say there is a word, a goal worded for mental health. One of the things that you might consider as evidence of success is do we have a successful social emotional learning program for students? You know, and, you know, and that's what you would look for at the end of the year, how we do it on that, that report out, what SEL programming we're doing for kids, you know, and that. Um, in whether you take that to other domains or not, is the purview of the board. If you decided that, you know, staff welfare was, uh, you know, an equal importance level, which obviously everyone's welfare is a big part. Um, you may have then criteria for that, that you want me to be looking at, you know, that's what my marching orders are then, I bring it to the church and we do the work. Right? So that's kind of where you're headed. So mental health might be the broad thing, and then, you know, one of the, as we get to that activity where you're. Doing this, you know, what is it? What are the things you want to see in place that, that say, yes, we're supporting this?
Yeah, the conversation for now is more about identifying the problems through written goals, not the solutions. We're having solution conversations that we're doing, having the wrong conversation. Uh, the other thing I would say is that I often remind boards to avoid the killer bees, buses, budgets, buildings, books. You know, it's not about the stuff, but it's a laudable goal to say we want to create an environment that's safe, thoughtful, supportive of the education. But whatever it might be, those all contribute to that. Being in a clean, dry building contributes to the educational wellbeing of the student. But it might not be the goal, um, but it will definitely be affected by what comes on, or will affect the goal. Uh, and it may be actions the superintendent recommends based on those things. But I think it would be important, for instance, if transportation is an issue that may get folded into one of those goals.
Because it's a T, not a B.
Yeah.
And that would be maybe under an operation school, and an example of, you know, successful operations, however you want ultimately defined. Is a certain level of status.
So has everybody had a chance to contribute?
Well, I didn't contribute. Um, I honestly, I apologize for not submitting any. I want to hear what this conversation was about, in all honesty, but I've got now some good ideas and can really ponder, and I will add to the, to the sheet. It's amazing though, the interpretation of words, like when you say safe environment, you're maybe thinking of a structural building, but I was thinking social emotional. Safety and, and, and I think, and when I was talking about modernizing our existing goals, I was thinking of. Giving, giving some consideration to all of the effects of COVID on our students and staff. That's what I meant by modernization, because that is a significant event that's happened to all of us. And I think that that event, which all of you have properly articulated in this brainstorming session, has to be reflective in our goals.
Trauma affects learning, and we've had an incredibly traumatic situation over the last couple of years. And any educator will tell you that you have to help relieve the effects of trauma before a child can learn and, and, and your staff too. They've all been traumatized by this as well, so, um, it's important to think about that, absolutely. Um, I get, uh, cause I know you have other business, and I, I mean, I know we could probably sit around here talking for quite a while. And we may want to schedule one of these when we don't have a meeting to run, to run back to. Uh, to continue some of these conversations beyond this, and I'm, we're happy to help with that if you need it. Um, but I guess I'd want to go around one more time. Is there anything we all want to add? And then we'll let Dr. Willett do his thing and get it back to everyone.
That was conversation, I don't even remember what I wrote.
When Tony was saying, you know, I don't know if it was you or Jen, I didn't know if it was me or Jen, yeah, I, I, the conversation went on so long. I know, there were some similar things. I, yeah, I think, I think that was really helpful and I appreciate you being here because, again, first term. I wrote these a month and a half after expecting to pop, right into goals, right into goals. Um, again, this, this was very helpful, so thank you, and thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. I look forward to keep working on this conversation and getting our goals.
I did want, I mentioned it to Dr. Willett this morning, I'm going in for surgery on September sixth. I, my doctor tells me I should be fine for the fourteenth, but I am not sure. So we may have to push that one to the twenty seventh or whatever that next one was, depending on what happens. But, uh, it's my intention to be here by the.
It's gonna be fine, we have to move though. Yeah, I honestly, you've been very flexible with this, because I know that we've had some little. Issues with the calendar and scheduling, so thank you for your flexibility and we will certainly offer that to you.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the rest of your summer too.
Absolutely. I hope everything goes well.
Thank you.
Okay, um. Well, she's just recording it. We'll start talking about the kindergarten enrollment by the time you pull it up.
I'm gonna go share. So now for this kindergarten enrollment, uh, planning the turvitation. So, uh, just as a long and short of this, you know, when we did the enrollment report back, um, earlier in the year, and I updated it somewhere January, February. One of the projections is that we were gonna have one of the highest years of kindergarten in recent history. And, huh, you know, and I think some people thought that was air chrome, so I created a second chart underneath saying, you know, well, here's an adjustment. The lower number, but the reality is we are, we are getting to that number. Uh, we are at a hundred and seventy four, now we're at a hundred and seventy five. I just had one come in earlier today, students who are not even through ours. So the, the one eighty three number that was part of that projection looks to be pretty accurate with respect to where we're probably gonna land. Um, so having said that, you know, that, that, that process was playing out, you know, as we had already adopted a bunch of. Um, I can't let class sizes get close to twenty in kindergarten, that's not gonna be viable for anybody. I also can't let the average get so close to twenty that, you know, some changes for IEP or whatever, you know, related issues. Result in a class of being twenty one, because an average, as you recall, you know, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, the average might be nineteen, but, you know, or rather, you know. Nineteen, twenty, twenty one, I can't have a class of twenty one. We can't do that. So, uh, what I did was I went back to the drawing board and I looked at what we could do. Um, I was able to rewrite a grant to allocate thirty one thousand dollars towards a position for us for a one-year position. And we're not gonna be hiring, uh, and one point O FTE lead professional, we're gonna handle it a different way. So between the two, we should be able to hire a kindergarten teacher at the MA two level, and we're gonna look for an additional kindergarten. Or we actually acquired, there's a, we had an interview process where we had a very good candidate, who was a second candidate. And I'm grabbing that second candidate, bringing them, you know, they were all, they were very highly ranked, both of them. I'm grabbing that one that was the, the one that just edged out, the other, I'm gonna grab, grab the one that was, was highly ranked. So at this point, that's what we're doing and we're using it at an ME two level. We'll bring in this person in for a year, and then you can count on me adding that to the budget request that the superintendent's proposed. That I'll be putting that in the budget for you to make a decision on, or a permanent.
The number, whatever we reach, whatever, if it's at one eighty three or one seventy five, they're gonna continue moving.
Yeah, the position ultimately you're looking at as another K two person. And keep in mind, we already fund a bunch of, we've funded three teachers now through another. In that K two, in that K two space. So we already have a lot of grant positions funding that level of staff, and I, and I reallocated the, I rewrote it, submitted it, got it accepted. So this is already accepted by the state. I was able to rewrite that one. I wanted to make sure I had that money before I came to the board. So we have those funds for the one year, okay?
Um, just a quick question, because I was thinking about this, um, when's our next meeting? Because are we gonna get the newest enrollment chart? I know teachers have not gone out to students or anything of that nature. And I know that's gonna be the buzz at some point here that people want to know, because they want to get the supplies, they want to know what team, they're vulnerable. Exactly. So, you know, in terms of now that we have a kindergarten, now you're to shuffle everybody.
Yeah, with this country, we're looking at August fifteen to eighteen, somewhere in that zone, just send out everything stuff.
Okay, so then the next four meetings, is there a chance that we can get that newest enrollment chart then?
Your, yeah, I can write an updated one, it'll keep changing.
Yeah, I know, but updated. Um, Jacob.
Yeah, uh, so a couple of questions. Like here, I see what grant had to be rewritten to get the, the funding for that position.
That's true too.
Okay, oh, remember your friend. And the second one is, so do you have an idea of when enrollment might level off? Like, do you eventually reach a point through this month where you start getting a large influx of applications?
Yeah, I mean, in terms of level off, like going out years to right now, right now, level off probably as we turn into September. Like August is now the last, the people that are either moving into town or moving, you know, or not realizing that they happen to already register, things like that. We're picking up the, the tail end of it, but it's still considering that it's the tenth through, you know, the thirtieth, we've got. Roughly three, four weeks.
Okay.
That this, we still get more in this, this period of time.
Okay, so usually, I was just curious with the, with the pacing of it, and it sounds like you get.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're ebbing down, because many people have, but I, I, I can see that hitting that number that we had projected, I think, one eighty three. I can see that happening here, you know.
Okay.
Um, I can comment first, just to Jacob, in my past life, from PTO staff, we used to have to. Make all these booklets for every single student, for every single class, which of course would start weeks before school started. And it was honestly so regular, at least the schools that I dealt with, which was March and TIS, that within those last couple of weeks. You get a phone call that the numbers jumped and you had to make, you know.
you get a phone call that the numbers jumped and you had to make, you had to make more. So it definitely does happen right before the school year.
Okay.
Um, I wanted to ask, adding the new kindergarten teacher, what then does the average class size look like?
We're looking to get it more towards eighteen, you know?
Okay. So not a huge jump then.
Yeah. Yeah.
So how does that follow? I mean, I understand you look at it from a, from a teacher perspective. How does it look for the rest of the resources as far as classrooms and the usual, in kindergarten required very specific?
We're gonna have to order, uh, more of the math, um, bridges, math materials, all of that. So we are doing that. We're looking for, we're having to be a little bit more.
And that, that may be, that may be an F F C.
We have to move classrooms around a little bit, but you know, but we, we have to do that based on strong, where specialized. All those operational things have to be done now. You know, that's kind of what we did. So we're ready for just September first.
I guess my question, it, it's not necessarily an answer here, but, but looking forward is as you start to move all those pieces around to, to handle this power wave and, and you know how that, it's as you start to approach those boundaries. Are you getting low on this resource and this resource? Where are those boundaries exist? So that to actually weaken from a, from a board perspective, from a budget perspective, watch that and look at that for years going forward. I mean, we know it's here and you're gonna see.
Well, and you're, uh, yes, yes. And your bubble is coming in, uh, the, the enrollment over the next ten years, where it's increasing is in K.
Are you here as one eighty three now? Two years till the COVID gets come.
That's, and that is also, if you look at the projection, that is roughly what is happening. It's, it's talent is stabilized and it was dropping for a while. It is really stabilized. It'll take you a while to ever get back to like three thousand, but you are climbing enough that we will have to pay attention to it from a facility standpoint and other things.
And if that's true, I mean, there's not like the people just on high road, like three houses that are been sold that have two kids now, there's kids. So it's.
Showing up.
Yeah. Yeah.
More kids means higher electric top than we, you know, the wire goes. It's all those little bitty things that we don't necessarily think of that being ten, eighteen dollars, they, they start that up. So we're just gonna see it. Know it's coming in position, the districts.
And what was our end of the year, nine thousand?
In change.
A thousand, yeah.
That doesn't cover.
Great. Okay. Um, this is all peachy. Um, any other?
Oh, Dana, you have your hand up.
I'm trying to figure out a way to how to politely have like something, um, sorry, a question for you and maybe this is already answered. So, uh, first of all, I know that back in, I don't know, seven year, I see what year. Where my daughter's in fourth grade. So when my daughter was in kindergarten, the class size was sixteen. This is daunting and she's going into fourth. So that's a, quite a big jump in those handful of years, those four years, five years. Going from sixteen, I think there was one class that had seventeen that was next door to hers at that time. But nineteen point three is a really large class size for kindergarten. Uh, so that's concerning. Um, the other thing is, uh, my question is, is this in addition to the replacement for the educator that we lost? This year, like, are we flat from losing Mrs. Groton and been replaced? And then this is an additional?
This is an additional.
This is, this is an additional. Okay. I mean, that was obviously a tremendous loss for talent, public schools with her, but, um, I think that, um, you know, and we're, we have a lot of fairly newly tenured kindergarten teachers. I think we have a couple of folks that have been around for a bit. Um, but then is most of our kindergarten staff newer or are they more tenured?
It's a, it's a combination. I would say there, we have, you know, we have a number of senior, uh, not senior, but, uh, experienced or veteran K staff. But, uh, you know, as these numbers are increasing and we're adding people and so on. Yeah. Most of these people are new. The MA two is gonna be a, a new person. It's not gonna be experienced for, you know, not gonna be somebody with many, many, many years of experience. That, that.
I mean, I, I remember just, you know, my, just volunteering in the classroom myself because I think that was one of her. And that was her last full year that was actually pre-COVID that we could actually do those things. And sixteen was still quite a bit to handle, especially at the maturity level of those students, even at the first grade level. And when we're getting to such, those high numbers, i- it's concerning. So I definitely think we need to really hone in on this and and, and ensure that we get this class size, these class sizes down, especially at that primary, um, educational levels. Nineteen point three is just too high.
Yeah. And so this would bring us to about eighteen.
That's still a lot.
Still a lot. That's still a lot.
The classroom parent, in their kindergarten class with them, it's like cats running around.
One thing. This, this, I said a little bit about to, I spoke a little bit to this in, um, a minute ago. That, you know, we're gonna have to focus our energies, you know, obviously keep everything at a, a quality of excellence. But that, we're gonna have to put a lot of focus on K five in the next few years. So as the, you know, as the S R's one, two, three, four, and A Y, you know, there, he's all back away. Those positions will need to be sustained under a full budget, which means you, you're looking at having multiple K five positions in the next few years to maintain that eighteen, right? Um, but you're looking at multiple, um, positions for that.
Yeah. And my concern too is making sure that we have the parents, making sure that they have the staff to help because it does make a difference.
Absolutely.
You know, and for volunteers, I know that since COVID, I know I was able to go on to a field trip. So I'm assuming that our protocol, we're allowing volunteers to come back in, classroom parents, because that does make, you know, it makes a difference. It helps. And I think we need to ensure that we're really drumming up to volunteers.
Yeah. I mean, this district has had between a hundred and sixty and two hundred volunteers in our volunteer ranks. When we register them, you know, we have to take all that info and do all the things we do. We, Tom has benefited from, you know, hundreds of volunteers that we have granted to serve.
I didn't know it was that large of a number.
That we have between a hundred, well, this is an old number, but they're coming back. You know, there was about one sixty to two hundred. Now, the variety of them.
You have to because you do all the background check.
We do background, you have to submit yourself.
Well, I feel the need to just add to this conversation that that is the number of everybody who's come in just once for a background check. So we need regular volunteers.
I mean, we, we, we always manage.
Just wanted that.
Somebody who might register, might come.
On the minutes.
Publicly, publicly. Most teachers truly do appreciate.
They do.
People willing to come in and, and, you know, building relationships in the classrooms and with the students and seeing them regularly. You know, you learn which kids need a little bit more hands on, need a little bit more help, need a little bit more attention, you know? And obviously the volunteer never takes the role of educator or parent and even like that, but it sure is nice to be able to, you know, walk a kid to the bathroom when they need it, or, you know, grab that extra pair of scissors or just let a ki- kid tell you all about what they're, you know, doing or writing about or, or reading about. Because when you have a class of nineteen students and these little people thrive on one-on-one attention and we all know that, um, a good education is, part of it is teachers making connections, one-on-one connections with students. So to have somebody else that a student can simply just say, do you like my son? What color yellow would you use? Is, you know, really giving something to a student. So that's my PSA.
Good one. Okay. Well, thank you so much for this and I think we can move on. Um, I, I do like hearing about this and I look forward to seeing what that newest enrollment chart looks like. I think we need to keep our finger on what's transpiring.
Uh, the, the one caveat about that is we will not have received the, um, NASDAQ or whatever data yet.
Yeah.
That comes later. So we'll be able to give basics, but that NASDAQ is, we'll get a lot of updated injections.
So we'll move on to the committee and liaison reports, which I will provide what the newest of the subcommittee members are, just to go through that. Um, so communications, we have Jenna's chair, we have Griffin and Sophia. Policy, we have Tony and Sophia, which Dana said that she would join yours. So we can have her contact you on that.
Thank you, Dana.
Now that happens too, just make sure to CC Jen and I so we can get it on the site.
Okay.
You know?
Okay. I just, I didn't get that far yet with everything.
I don't know my nerves at all.
Um, F F C, we still have Griffin as chair, Dana, Tony and Jacob. Negotiations, we have Jen and Griffin and I've been helping out with that. Section. Um, curriculum, we have Jacob as chair with, uh, Jaden. So those, that's what we have for right now, just so that everyone understands. So it is what it is. Um, the only one that I really think has been going on is negotiations. So you can give a quick, I guess.
We are currently in negotiations with administrators.
Perfect. Um, when is your curriculum?
Should be next Wednesday. We actually have two this month, um, the regular one and then a special one.
Okay. And what are the dates?
So seventeen is for first one. Just double check. I believe it's the Wednesday after first, but I'll get back to you. Um, or that's right here. The twenty fourth is the other one.
So you have seventeen and twenty four?
Yeah.
Okay. And that's.
So I'm not, I'll talk to you outside of the meeting, but yeah, things might change. And I'm so sorry. And I'm sorry.
And there's also two members. So.
Yeah. Yeah, I know. It's the dates now. Yeah. Yeah.
And I try to make when I certainly can, I have, I mean, jumped anywhere. Me too. Um.
Okay. It's just a matter of, you know, I think same days, board of, uh, general board meetings, you know?
Yeah.
Possibly moving it back a half a month. Just, we'll talk.
Okay. I'll have a conversation about it.
Okay. So, um, policy, when are you meeting next?
So it's just looking, we are on the twenty third. Uh, we've, we've had a couple of scheduled conferences in the past couple of months and uh, curriculum has added a couple of things to our agenda. Uh, so we've got the one on the twenty third and we'll probably be looking at having maybe an extra one next month. Uh, I talked to Sophie and Dana and see how to schedule the one. Uh, possibly we need to adjust our, our meeting times too, you know, we can, we can do that. Of course, we'll talk with Jen. We'll keep her.
Yes, she's, she tends to help you.
Yeah, yeah, though she's.
Each of you has sometimes different needs.
The more she knows.
And you're. She helps with that.
Get to it.
Absolutely. On communications.
Next meeting is the twenty second at three. We'll probably, we'll finish the conversation about state mandates.
Okay. Um, F F C, you said it was the, uh, thirty first. Okay. So I think that that's a good. I didn't even think we'd get.
I just have one thing. Um, as Birch Grove, I know it's kind of a dissolving committee. Um, but Katie did send communication to Dr. Willa tonight, um, but I didn't get a chance to share at our last meeting because I was on vacation. Um, but Beverly started working out the billing process to actually physically close it out, dissolve the committee. Um, then what we'll need to do is have the board of that accept the project as complete, um, once the town paper site is ready. Um, we don't have a timeline yet, but Katie has said, has assured me and Dr. Willet that she'll work closely with us to make sure that you'll have, that, uh, leadership will have plenty of advanced notice. We can prepare a draft, um, so we can have the appropriate wording on, on our agenda. Um, so we can have it, uh, and then Katie also offered to attend the meeting, uh, for any of the board members who had any questions on the closeout. So more to come on that.
I do think though, the question that I think people think about is the soccer field email that we have received about the brass.
Right. She's been, um, they're continuing to work on it. Tomatoes continuing to work on it and make sure, I mean, Dr. Willa might have some more information, but it is, is a continued conversation, um, that is not getting ignored or neglected. I don't think this drought has helped it any. And, but it has been something that, uh, Pete's working closely with it to ensure that it gets to the condition that it needs to be in. Um, but that's pretty much what I have right now. Unless you have something you need, you could add, Dr. Willet.
No, I, I, I basically waiting for information and we'll provide it as soon as I get it. Just, just like Dana's.
There's no new information from the last correspondence, um, that we had that was shared with the board of it, as far as I'm aware, at least that came to me, I should say. Or, or building committee.
So we're, we should be done.
Actually, there was also, there was no.
Yes. Oh, thanks for that. I mean, yeah. So it was Jen's first meeting. Um, and then the, the thing we covered was, uh, Madhu had, um, uh, front of this, come on and do a nice presentation on the screen addiction, particularly good video games.
Did a great job.
Very.
Excellent. I went downstairs and like took my kids' phones away and that was. So good. It was disturbing some of the data that he brought.
I was, I was doing little calculations in my head like, okay, well, it checks this box, but not this box. But I was thinking, you know, as parents, us listening to it and Jacob and Jaden, you know, and not seeing parents listening to it. It must've been a different experience. We must've seen so many different things, you know?
I felt guilt. Oh, yeah. You know?
But it was, if you have, if you have a chance, go check out the presentation. Um, I think it was, I saw it uploaded to, to Facebook. It was, was quite a first meeting to go to and it was, it was, it was really interesting and really well done. He was actually, um, the man who spoke, I wish I had his name written down, but he actually worked in a, um, worked for, it was called Restart, which was a, um, a program for addiction. Video game addiction is a real thing and he did a great job of, I'm sorry. It's okay that I've had it. Um, what I thought was so great about the presentation is that he just, he was able to discuss so many things. I told my high schooler, if you ever have to write a report, write it on this. Because he talked about, you know, how video game addiction affects the brain. And then he talked about, you know, just the history of video games and then the target audiences and how that changed throughout the years. Um, and then also talked about, you know, in different levels, you know, how addiction faces children, preteens, teens, young adults, adults. It was ju- it was, it, it was so well done. So.
Any of this, this stuff. Most importantly, he did leave us, he left us a lot to think about. You guilt. I mean, you know, when you're. Reflecting on your high school, you're like, oh geez, maybe that wasn't all that great, but, um, hi- hi- Johnny Talk. Um, and he, he left us with, because I asked him a question about, okay, this is just a curiosity question. Where do you see this going? And he talked about virtual reality and all this stuff and it was, it was, it was awesome. If you have not checked it out, I believe it is available for, the, the minutes are available. But it, it was video posted. So I actually highly suggest going to watch it just to learn something fascinating. It, it is really cool. And you know, from, from my age, you know, I remember as he was briefing the history, he was talking about the Atari twenty six hundred and then the Nintendo and it showing up in the toy section as opposed to that, that same thing. And I was sitting there and listening to him and he said, you know, he said the Nintendo all of a sudden, because the robot showed up in the toy section, which meant kids. And I remember seeing it in the toy store and then as he talked about it, I'm going, hey, I got tripped. But it wasn't the way of, and looking at it from that perspective was, was an eye opener.
And then sexualizing gaming characters and.
And that changed.
Yeah.
It's funny that you would say virtual realm because that Oculus stuff now, half the people on that are little pits. If anybody ever uses that, half, half of the users are these little children that apparently no one's watching.
About some of those issues, you know, the, like the pornography and the kids under, let me say, under the age of ten, with the, the percentage of kids under the age of ten that have like. I was just blown away with that. You know, that my, my little ones or even my eighteen year old, he couldn't even imagine that those type of issues are existed.
But it made sense.
It did. It did. No, it was an eye opening for me, you know, as well. I meant to send Madhu a, a thank you. Incredible.
Me too.
Yeah, it's just a great.
Actually, I'm enforcing my high schooler to watch it.
Yeah.
Now I'm just recounting things to him like, do you know?
Didn't save it for my sister. There you go.
Okay. Well, we'll close out that and continue on to, uh, board action L one. So we have policy forty fifty.
So these are pretty straightforward. Um, first, these were brought up prior, the chief personnel officer and I gone through this policy. It's a full replacement of the policy. So you'll notice that, um, this is the new S and G, you know, policy and this, the, what tails at, at the bottom is the old. Um, so we're just basically doing a full replacement because of the years that have passed. One thing that we did not. One thing that we did not put in here, though, is we don't do credit checks as part of personnel checks. Some places, some businesses will do credit checks, and we don't look at that. So we did take out the part of our credit checks, but we do have the thing else that's in here and follow these procedures to to the letter, so. Um you know, these are too long to kind of read, but they are posted, have been posted, they're part of the dashboard, and they were covered in the policy committee. Um so we're recognizing, you know, this, when you're ready, um if you feel you can, you know, motioning to accept these changes.
And I think we're ready. Um I will entertain the motion to move on to the changes to Policy forty fifty. I presented in item L one of the August tenth, twenty twenty, um twenty twenty-two, Board of Education. Okay, any discussion on this? Does anyone have any questions or concerns?
Oh, I appreciate it, though. I do.
Um all those in favor, can you say aye? Dana?
Hi, I'm slow to the mute.
Well, then that passes unanimously as is.
So the next one is fifty-one sixty, also pretty straightforward, not a ton of language changes here. Just noticed that blue or highlight, you know, the strikeout is what we're removing. The yellow or italics is what is added to base, you can't see the colors, some systems can't. Um so we're just updating the law, basically, and that, that's it. It's just pretty straightforward, it's just updating that to the appropriate legal rights, to be updated. So then changing the date, obviously.
Um I will entertain the motion for this. Any discussion? Discussion, no, all those in favor can say aye. Dana, you're the only one out there, so you gotta undo yourself here with your little mute. Dana, are you there? Can you hear me now? Okay, so Dana is not available for the vote, however, um even if she were against this, we would still have majority. Therefore, this passes as is, so you could just donate that she is maybe unavailable due to technical issues.
Next item is um the up-sue custodial contract. Uh we, negotiations team, I negotiated with the custodians, did a good job of it, very good process. And then so uh the Board of Ed does have the strikeouts, the boards per viewers to be able to review that. We can't put that in the document until it's actually endorsed by the board. So um you know, that'll be posted publicly through the new uh standard contract as soon as. But the board members have access to that through the dashboard. What I did do is summarize it. Um and we do have Ms. Galchis, who is the chair of the negotiations, so had anything they want to 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 any of it. But I tried to summarize what the basic um tenants of it are. So, I don't know, as part of the agreement, um three-year duration was decided upon from the, you know. Now to the twenty, twenty twenty-five, it is retroactive, we do pay, you know, the new, the new contract. Back to July first for those who have earned some money, et cetera. Some house clean, big housekeeping things where that we didn't need to do any kind of written statements of vacation and sick, because it was already provided and other things. Like on their paychecks, so rather than have our own, oh, already overwhelmed human service, you know, human resources department have to provide reports. That are already provided and threatened through the checks, we just had that taken out of the language. Um employees are temporarily sometimes required to assume the duties of another employee. So uh this provision allowed for them to receive that higher ranking employees pay if they are doing that for more than fourteen. Um fourteen days. Maybe how that works, fourteen column. So they'll get paid at the higher rate if they're in that net position for that person for fourteen days. Um the V O E share of the HSA deductible will be reduced from sixty-four, sixty-two point five to fifty percent. So the board pays less. Um employees shall be responsible for paying the following percentages of premium costs. So where it was fifteen, fifteen to fifteen, it's now sixteen, sixteen point five and seventeen over the next three years. Uh so they they pay more of their premium costs. The board shall provide for the participating player for the duration of the contract process, family coverage, et cetera. Uh full dental plan, the following rates for the dental plan are as follows here. They were seventeen-five, seventy-five, thirty-five, now they're eighteen, eighteen-five, and nineteen for the next three years respectively. Wages were increased um each year here of a dollar plus two percent G W Y in the first year, two point five G W Y in the second. Three point oh G W Y in the third. Um a note here, even with these, at the end of our contract period, our custodians are in the mid-range of our demographic groups. So this gets us into a competitive range for custodians, because our custodians are generally not a competitive. They're county or or dirt, so this gets them to a mid-range. They're not at the top, they're not at the bottom with this. They're, you know, in a competitive place for us to be able to maintain staff levels and hire new staff. And that's with all the stuff you're seeing here. So um the recommended course of action here would be a move to L three, but you already have it there. And then proposed motion, motion to accept the early up-sue facility bargaining unit agreement to be enforced from July first, twenty twenty-two through July thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, two questions, quick questions. One, how often is it that? One employee is filling the role of another for that period of time? How often does that?
It does happen, though. Sometimes somebody will step up into the role of head or something like that. Um usually has to do with illness or, you know, families.
So I guess three questions, because I'm gonna add a second part to that question. What happens when that role is filled? Now, the other role, I assume, needs to still get accomplished. Is that the reason for the pay bump? Because those, both of those.
Well, usually we'll put on a sub to cover it, whatever it is, yeah, somebody moves into another role, we still need to get a sub. But it's hard, you can't put a sub in a head still.
Right, so you.
But they don't know what they're doing, but you can bring a sub in, basically, so.
And then third was just a basic question. What's the reasoning for the, for the premium cost increases? What is the?
Um it's just, it's a. Basically, it's the going rate right now, it's, it's within the realm of what other districts are doing. So you'll notice that, you know, with a constant that where the market's. And it does have monetary value for the district, so you know, you're trying to balance out some.
Um I'd just like to add that we did um very extensively look at what our custodians are paid um as compared to other districts. So this was a well-deserved one. And I would just like to say that, you know, our schools would not run without our custodian. And I'd like to thank them for the work that they do every single day. I have, you know, worked with many throughout the years, um and they have always treated volunteers. And any students I've ever seen them with and staff with kindness and respect and.
They keep everything going, very important people for us.
Especially when they kick out the little hazards.
I got a dumb question, but G W I, you know, what that stands.
General wage.
Okay, okay, that's exactly what it sounds like, okay. And then. You mentioned, you know, trying to stay competitive with custodial salaries, which is completely fair, and I'm not proposing that. But beside curiosity, like, were we having troubles hiring uh custodians and filling those roles?
Um we, we've had trouble, you know, through the pandemic, maintaining all levels, all things. But having said that, um yeah, other districts around us did pay. And so there, there were some attrition, there is and were some, um some people are going to those other jobs. Yeah, this, this would help keep us more competitive.
And I guess kind of a related question, um I know we've had. I think trouble with some of our our facilities people, you know, getting a little bit older, maybe having trouble filling those spots when they retire. I was just curious, is there a similar problem with the custodians?
I don't anticipate having a problem maintaining the studio staff, I guess, with this. You know, and then, you know, you do, some of these staff, some of them have many certifications. And that's why that may be a more complicated situation with those people's trainings, and they have certifications that when they leave, they take those. Um so that, that facilities piece is a little bit more.
That's all I mean.
I just wanted to say, uh, thank you to Dr. Willett in the negotiations committee for all this work. I know it's not easy. Negotiations, so I appreciate all the work that went into it.
We have a great negotiations chair. The Board of Ed chair is throwing all her intellectual weight into it, and she's helping. You guys have a great team here for Talon, you're all doing a great job.
I believe so too.
At this time, um I will entertain this, this motion.
Sophia Shay motion to accept the V O E uh up-sue custodian bargaining unit agreement to be enforced in July first, twenty twenty-two. Through July, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Any other further discussion?
I just want to bring more time with the, the, the wage increase.
Yeah, she's ready. Okay, so then at this time, any further discussion? All those in favor can say aye. Okay, any opposed? That would be Tony, you have that Lisa. Okay, but this still passes. Okay, now let's move on to public participation. At this time, if anybody online would like to have two minutes to talk about what was on the agenda tonight. Uh please raise your hand unless you're name and address for the record, and you'll be given uh two minutes with a timer. At this time, if anyone online would like to speak, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none. We will um. Oh, wait, points of information, I missed the other one. I already missed that. Um do any board members have any points of information that they would like to say before we conclude this meeting? Okay, seeing none, then I will entertain. Okay.
Jane, any comments?
No, sir.
Thanks to everyone.